Start finding some seats and we'll get ready to start the six o'clock regular session. Give me just a minute to get organized. All right, I've got eighteen zero two, six oh two for non-military folk. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation. If you please stand and we'll follow that with Pledge of Allegiance. Roxanne, if you would, please.
Okay, let's pray. Dear God, I just pray your blessing on this meeting tonight. I pray for healing in the community. I pray, Lord, that you will help us all remember that we are part of one big community, that we will be kind and civil to each other, that we'll be open to reason and listen well. And I pray, Lord, that you will do your work in our city and bless this city and bless this meeting in Jesus' name, amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this country, one nation, one home, with liberty and equality. Honors the Texas flag, the United States of America.
That didn't work. Yeah, that didn't work. Yeah, yeah.
That was helpful, it was up there.
All right, well, hopefully that was the hiccup. All right, citizens come in on the agenda items. This is an opportunity for members to, other public suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with the presentation limited to three minutes. All speakers will conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking and will announce their name and address to be included in the minutes, please. State law, perhibits a mayor and members of council from commenting on, oh no, there it is, okay, I was gonna say mine's been working all night long, commenting on any statements or engaging in dialogue without a, the appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Law. So I reminded speakers during both sessions, if you signed up to speak tonight, the microphone is up there, please make sure you stay close to the microphone so our residents that are live streaming or tuning in can hear what you have to say, counsel. Again, just a reminder, please, as we get into business, make sure that we do the same thing. So we have twelve speakers tonight, so the timer back here will give you a thirty-second notice, so please try to wrap up your comments so we can get through everybody, if you would, please. First up, Ms. Denise.
My name is Denise Seibert, 1114 Great West Loop. I appreciate that we can be heard tonight. I thank you for serving us as a community and I thank you for the staggered terms. I thank you that it's getting on the agenda and that today we can get it done. I do appreciate all of you, the hard work that you've done, the learning and the training that you've gone through, but we do need to have a consistency of having people that have the knowledge to stay in office and those new to come in. So this will help us in that, not being of fresh new, starting again with new people. So thank you for the staggered terms. I appreciate it so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
JoJo Guzman, 22 Willow Run Drive. Again, council, mayor, staff, I do want to thank you for the opportunity for letting me speak and I do appreciate each and every one of you. I want to address the asphalt, the brush and providing information to the residents. You know, the response I did receive from an email, you know, stated that the asphalt in the back of the City Hall was in regards to drainage. I checked every single minutes of meetings. I actually had three individuals that left on good standings before years ago. No one's heard of any drainage issues at City Hall, you know, with that. So for transparency, you know, I need to know where that was. Where did that come from that there's an actual drainage issue at City Hall and that's the reason why that was put back there to prevent drainage and issues with City Hall on that? Secondly, on the brush, yes, sixteen months over on Willow Run, Possum Den, Willow, Great West Loop, Cottonwood, that brush has been there and it is not only unsightly, it is a fire hazard. I've been doing research and those who know me knows I do a lot of research. I found out of Minnesota, of all places, a solution that they did when they wound up having lots and lots of flooding and that's where they actually had their actual residents in their place, handled their brush themselves, took it to their own dump or whatever, but then they took the receipt to their city for reimbursement for, you know, disregarding, for taking away their excess brush and so forth. And that could be a solution for us. Another solution could maybe end up even being to where like we do quarterly cleanups. Yes, we know we got to deal with FEMA, but however, maybe we just have one for brush and then it hounds off and the burning and everything follows all the compliance with FEMA and TCO and so forth, TQ and so forth. So that is another solution that we really do need to end up looking at. As I said earlier, I've been a resident of Morgan's Point Resort for over thirty-one years. I don't take word, somebody's word is gospel. I do research, I try to find solutions for different problems. I trust, but I verify. And, you know, one of the things that we are currently lacking right now is a lot of communication. It took myself almost forty minutes to try to find the council, the meeting at three o'clock today so I could listen to it because I could not find the link to it. I know other people had the same problem. Residents and volunteers shouldn't always be the ones who provide the education and the information. We should really be able to provide it, you know, through the City Hall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Tammy Day.
I've been a member of Morgan's Point for eleven years. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Same speeches five at the other meeting, but I'm here tonight not just for myself and my family who's resided in NPR for eleven years, I'm here to advocate for fair and equal treatment under the law of our employees. My expectation of council is that when a disaster happens, an emergency meeting would be called. Wouldn't each of you think that this is a disaster? Definition of disaster is to be found as a significant event that causes distress. I can tell you, being up here, speaking in front of all of you, looking at those of you out there, we're missing people and I'm looking at employees that are no longer with us. So please, I apologize if I'm emotional. I am asking council to do their due diligence in investigating and being mindful that is a requirement under federal law to uphold fair and equitable hiring practices and standards because as a business owner, it is my duty and responsibility to uphold employment laws. Please let this sit for a moment. Hostile work environment, bullying, discrimination, equal opportunity, whistleblower law, abuse of power, toxic leadership, violation of Title VI and ADA, improper termination, adverse actions, nepotism, or unfair hiring practice for a city manager-run government, which is not correct. Please look at the patterns that have changed in the culture and policy of our city government and who is responsible for those changes. Doesn't the city council meetings reflect a culture of praise and appreciation for our city employments, employees, without any adverse action in their employee files? Living in a city where our long-term reputable employees have been tossed out like trash is incomprehensible and embarrassing. Why were these decisions made by staff with no tenure in the city? I think I'm gonna say something a little bit more than I did earlier. You need to really dig into Duncanville and KPD. This is part of open records. This is a pattern of behavior. Counsel, we need to clean it up.
Thank you, ma'am. Lou.
Lou Gillard, 12 Branding Iron Drive, Morgan's Point Resort. And I've been here for almost six years. Came here because I liked the environment, people here were easy to talk to. Seemed like the ideal place to come to. But since I've been here, all I see is a one-sided view of a lot of the stuff that goes on. A lot of things here have to be fixed. Tried approaching the city manager. They gave me an hour slot to come and talk to him. I was in there for about fifteen minutes and he got busy and he had to take off. Sort of ignored me. You know, there's a lot of things I have on a sheet here that I'm supposed to go over. I've been talking all day, my voice is sore. I want this stuff looked into, I'm gonna turn the sheet over to you. I want it looked into. If you don't care about this city as a whole, then you don't care about the city the right way. You know, I get up in front of churches and I preach sermons and stuff and I get better reception in churches that don't like when I tell them they're sinners than what I get here from some of the people that run the city. And I'm not referring to everybody because there's some people here that are doing good things. And I appreciate every one of you because none of you get paid for what you do except the city manager. You all give your time to take care of this city, not take care of things that are what you want, but what the entire city wants. You know, I was on the council in Bartlett, Texas, and there are so many little sections in Bartlett. It's one of the most prejudiced cities I've ever been in my life because they're named, nicknames after what they are. Where the whites and blacks are together, it's called Salt Lake. And I saw the infighting and I saw the stuff that tore that city down and I see it going on right now. You got somebody who's working for the city for fifteen years that was just praised and they were just asked to either leave or get fired. That's a hostile working environment. You don't do things like that to people. And if someone's doing something wrong, you retrain them before you fire them. I would have liked to fire half the soldiers I had. I had to retrain them and make them do their job. Here, you can't make them do anything, but you can retrain them and tell them, "We're not happy with you." And I didn't see any of that on any of these people that got fired. Council hearing, "I'm writing you up, I'm writing you up, I'm writing you up." That's a hostile work environment. What is wrong with people at City Hall? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Eddie.
Edward Cozart, seven Pawnee Lane, mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen of, or concerned resident of Morgan's Point Resort to discuss issues that I believe threaten the integrity of our local government and threaten our community. For too long, a pattern of poor communication and a lack of accountability has created this sense of frustration for the citizens. This is not a new problem, but a persistent one. And it's a pattern that appears to start at the top with our city manager and our interim city secretary. We as residents deserve a local government that operates with transparency and holds itself to the highest standards. Instead, we have witnessed a disregard for established procedures and a failure to take ownership of simple mistakes. When residents attempt to ask for information or answers, we are often met with silence, vague responses, or getting a runaround. This is not a model for good governance, is a recipe for distrust. A recent incident serves as a perfect example of the systemic failure. We have witnessed a blatant waste of public resources, precious road material that was paid for by our taxes, was used to pave a parking spot that was never approved by this council. Not only is this squandering our community's money, but it also demonstrates a clear and shocking lack of oversight. This project was conducted without approval and it must not be overlooked as a minor incident. To compound this issue, the response we received regarding this matter was an unsigned statement about the materials. It is completely unacceptable. An official statement from the city that lacks the signature of an accountable party is a non-starter. It shows a fundamental unwillingness to accept responsibility for the actions that have a direct financial impact on our city. This isn't about a parking spot, it's about a culture that allows for waste and avoids accountability. So tonight, I'm just not here to voice a complaint, I'm here to call for action. It is time for this council to step up and address these issues within the City Hall. It is your civic duty to hold the city manager and the interim city secretary accountable for their actions and their failures. Do not sit idly by while our city's resources are wasted and our trust is eroded. I implore each of you to begin a transparent investigation into this incident and take meaningful steps to ensure that this never happens again. We need a clear, definitive plan to restore accountability and communication. Our city deserves better, our residents deserve better, we all deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jo.
Hi, I'm Jo Weaver at Ten Calamity Jane. I personally want to say that I think by being here for twenty-seven years, I have seen things that come in this city and things have gone out of this city and it should have happened. I think if we, our city councilor, our city manager, our mayor, I think that giving them time to do what's right, look at how the audits that have already been corrected, look at the bank statements have so much more been corrected, look at those things. I personally, several times, tried to talk to the city, previous city managers and also to the chief of police and I was ignored and I should not have been ignored as a citizen of Morgan's Point, there again for twenty-seven years. My late husband loved Morgan's Point and cherished Morgan's Point and so do I. But as far as I'm concerned, as an individual, I think that we need to take trust and know that our city council is doing the best what is for our city. And off of that note, I would like a trash can on the walkway at the boat ramp, that pipe that sticks up there, I clean it out every time. And we don't have any trash cans on that walkway and we need that to help keep our city clean and that trash blowing everywhere. So, sorry, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda.
Linda Bridges, 197 Lake Forest Drive, and I'm speaking tonight as a volunteer, a resident who has spent most of my recent retirement years working to help make Morgan's Point a place we're proud to call home. But tonight I speak with a heavy heart. There's no denying the tension in this room. Many residents are angry, many staff members have left or been let go, volunteers feel unsupported and trust in our leadership is, in our process is fading. But I didn't come here to add to the anger, I came here to ask for something deeper, connection, courage, and clarity. As a volunteer, I've seen firsthand how much good can happen when people feel heard and valued. But lately, it seems like decisions are made behind closed doors, communication is inconsistent, and those of us trying to help are left in the dark. We're not asking for perfection, we're asking for partnership. I recognize that our city benefits from two types of volunteers, those with formal authority and those who serve without it. Each brings unique strengths and perspectives. By working together in a spirit of mutual respect and shared purpose, we can create more inclusive and effective outcomes for everyone. I urge our city leaders to be more approachable, to show up not just in the meeting but in conversations, to listen, yes, but also to lead. Don't delay decisions out of fear that somebody will be unhappy. Every choice has trade-offs. What matters is that most choices are made with integrity and explained with honesty. We need to understand your personal vision for the city, not just the policies, but the purpose, and we need to know how that vision reflects the hopes of the residents you serve. As a resident, I ask for better outreach. Help us understand the rules, the regulations, the reasoning, whether it's road repairs, drainage, or development. People may not like the answer, but they deserve to know why the answer was given. And please recognize the volunteers. We are not just helpers, we're neighbors, advocates, and allies. Many of our residents dedicate long hours, often quietly and without recognition, to support and strengthen our community. When we feel dismissed, the city loses not just our time, but our trust. This is a moment to rebuild not just infrastructure, but relationships. I believe in the city, I believe in the people, and I believe that with transparency, empathy, and decisive leadership, we can move forward, not perfectly, but together. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Linda. Lynn Mylam.
Yes, all the green suits are in here for me because they think I'm gonna go crazy. I'm not. First of all, I wanted to thank Jimbo Snyder because he doesn't get paid for anything he does, but let me tell you, school starts started today. He got out there in the nine thousand degrees on his own, riding lawnmower and mowed from the Dollar General all the way to the school, by himself. If y'all don't know, he's also got some conditions like all of us do, by himself, that man did that. Nobody told him to and nobody paid him to. And then Shane, while you're here, I'd like to tell you, you've probably taken hell this week because, and that goes to where I got here, I had six pages, y'all, that people asked me, things for me to ask y'all, but some of it's kind of ugly and I was trying to take a page out of Denise's book and say something nice. But the council, what I was, I always understood that this is a council manager, meaning everything has to go through y'all. I asked several y'all the other day, the biggest question I think anybody might want to know, why in the Hades did you fire Mr. Taren Vasos-Williams? He's got more credentials than any of us in here. He made this department what it is now, but you saw fit to fire him. And I can't believe that y'all would have done that if it went through y'all. I just don't believe it. I believe you didn't know before you believed it and voted that way. So that's what I gotta say. And these people back here, sitting in front of where I'm sitting, those people have blood, sweat, and tears for this place and to be taken out like yesterday's garbage, that's some crap right there.
Hello, my name's Earlene Imkin. I live at 10 Lemonwood Drive, Morgan's Point. I've been here for forty-five years and I would like you all to know that I've seen the good and the bad and the council members always have the best intentions of everything. I don't think we've really ever had any terrible ones, to really be honest, but city council is only as good as the person who's running it and we have had so much trouble over the last few weeks that it drug my butt up here to tell you that we have not got enough transparency, there's not enough communication, and the things that are going on, we can't continue to grow the way we're growing if we have the infighting and the people who want to be in charge of everyone. So I hope you'll take that to heart and know that I just, I thank you all, do a great job, but the city cannot run unless everyone works together to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Carrie.
I'm gonna start my own timer, if you don't care. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My address is in Belton, but I was a three and a half year employee here. I come tonight as a former employee and want to express my concerns with the number of departures of tenured employees over the last month. I was forced out of my position by Dennis Baldwin in much in a similar manner back in January and February and I stayed away to not cast any negativity towards NPR, but I can't stand idle any longer. I had asked Dennis to address council and the community on the February eleventh workshop to just say my farewells, but quite conveniently Dennis failed to do so, which I kind of found odd at the time, but I think it makes more sense after this last month of resignations, which kind of lets me segue into my next talking point. I want to talk about Dennis Baldwin as an individual. I'm assuming all of y'all took the time to read Taren Vasquez's numerous emails to council. He forwarded them to me. It took me a long time to read them, but they resonated with me. Taren, instead of making a two-page letter, can turn it into a six-page letter just like that. But the number of instances that he, you know, gives y'all example to, if you don't believe something is wrong with this city, then I don't know what's wrong with you. Said, he says it much more eloquently than I can and I'm gonna tell you a couple of my own personal instances, but if you read those and took them to heart as the working condition slash pettiness slash incompetency that the city has put up, the city staff had to put up since Dennis Baldwin, Mary and Ida were started here, working together since March of twenty-five, I don't know what to tell you. It seems hard to fathom that city staff, especially the ones that were just fired, and I'm gonna use the term fired, were able to work without issue for the previous city manager, Dalton Rice, who now works at a much bigger city than NPR, and the interim city manager who's in this room, who is the planning director of the SitCOC. Where were all these issues then? So now I want to talk about several other comments made to Dennis about his level of hypocrisy just in dealing with me. When I first started here, when he was here, I was assistant city manager, CFO. Dennis basically says he doesn't need an assistant city manager in this size. However, why do you promote an employee who has no city experience within one or two months of getting here? I understand that she worked for school district, but that's two different types of government. He also disagreed with the use of city consultants to get us caught up for the bankrupts and the audits and people misuse both of those terms incorrectly all the time, but conveniently enough, I'm pretty sure they're still using the same consulting firm. All right, well, so there's a lot. Please Google Dennis Baldwin lawsuits in the city of Colleen, Mary with Brownville ISD, long-awaited audit, blah, blah, blah. A lot of people ran on transparency and communications, but I mean, this has to be the all-time low, especially when there's adequate budgeting, or you know, budgeted staff. You know, the easiest thing for me to be able to disprove some of these things would be to find the information in the packet. None of this information is included in the packet anymore, it's all handouts. Why is that? I'm pretty sure there's a reason and y'all all know it. Now, will you do anything about it?
Kim.
I live on Bobcat and as a former educator, I did a lot of research too, but I'm not gonna go over everything, you've heard it. So I want to just kind of tell you a little bit about my why. My parents lived in Oklahoma their entire lives. My husband and I grew up there, the military brought us here. Scott and Mike kept us here because we had a daughter with special needs. And so we became Texans, not by choice, but I'm glad we're here and love y'all. But then we spent about twenty years trying to talk my parents into moving to Texas. You can imagine, try talking to Texan who moved to Oklahoma, right? So what I finally did was when they came down one time, I brought them out here. We had lived in Belton and Temple and mom and dad just kept saying, "That's not us, it's not us." So I brought them out here and it was not me that convinced them to move to Texas, it was this community. Now, fast forward, that's been eleven, twelve years ago, and my mom and dad, I cannot say enough good things about the police and fire department, they're aging, my dad has dementia and so unfortunately, we have to use their services quite a bit and they are amazing people. However, the last three to four months have been very difficult. My mom has had several issues with her water bill. She tries to call up here, there's no answer. I thought maybe she was calling the wrong number. she was calling the wrong number, so I tried. Not getting anywhere. So, all of that to say, yes, I did do my research, and I had something else prepared. But my why that I'm here is because my parents, my two daughters, my two son-in-laws, and my six grandchildren live here. Now, sometimes it's a little too close. We bought a travel trailer, we get away a little bit. But they are my why, and we all want to stay here. But we can't unless we get some things cleaned up. So, as you're looking at all the legal things and all of that, and you have to do that, and I know you will, but I want you to think about, what if my parents, and my two children, and my six grandchildren lived here? Is this what I would want them to live in? Please, please, let's take a look at things. Let's try to figure out what's going on, and let's try to get it fixed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Donna Hartman.
Donna Hartman, 112 Great West Loop. I have lived in our city for 48 years, and I was a public servant to all of you for 32 of those years. I love our city, I'm passionate about our city. I love council members, past and present. I like our staff, past and present. And I love the residents, well, most, most of you, anyway. But I'm here to say, I want to say thank you to our city council and staff. Thank you for the strategic plan meeting you had today for two hours, that I think really recognized the concerns and the input from our citizens that they had here today. I want to thank you for bringing our groundwater project to fruition. Thank you, council, for contributing to make our audits a top priority, and to the staff that has worked on them for hours and hours and days and days, and they have. They were left with four years of uncompleted audits. That's huge. That is huge. They are getting them done. They have done the 2021 audits, completed. 2122 audits, completed. 2223 audits, we just heard that they have a draft, and that should be finished soon. And they're already have loaded down the 2324 audits. I think that's incredible. That was a Herculean task, and that took all of you to do that. Thank you for helping us during that devastating storm that we had. It destroyed houses, it destroyed properties, commercial businesses. And they got on it, and they got with FEMA. And that's no small task, to work with FEMA. Thank you, NIDA, for all the work that you did with that. And we have received one check from FEMA. We had many storms after that, that knocked down even more trees. So, this isn't was a one-time storm. This continued, all those loose branches fell down again. And the city has dedicated time, and BJ and his staff are going out picking these up. I know it's not a perfect solution, I know it's slow, but they are sure working on it. Thank you, council, for budgeting an unprecedented amount of money for our roads, over a half a million dollars. That's unprecedented. I was on the council, I never, I never budgeted that kind of money for our roads. And thank you for completing those roads. And thank you for getting a five-year plan that was engineered, and the engineers determined which roads would we done. Thank you for all the hours and hours of extra time. I've served on the city council. Sometimes I meet in executive sessions, and they're not allowed to make, by law, they're not allowed to make you privy to every conversation that's in executive meetings. It's so frustrating. I went through this, too. You have to sit quietly and don't respond, because by law, you're not allowed to respond. So, I thank you for honoring that. I know it is so frustrating to sit there, especially when you're being attacked. Our city's not perfect. Things haven't been done this perfect. I never did perfect things when I was on our city council and when I was mayor. But the thing is, they are trying, they are working hard. I have had questions, and I have had concerns, and I've gone straight to the city council with my questions and concerns, and I've gone straight to Dennis Baldwin and talked to him. I just want us to be very conscious of how we go about doing this. What's that? Okay, I'm very sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize that. But let's be better, too, citizens. Let's be better about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. That concludes public comment. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna push pause for about 30 seconds, and let anybody who is here to let your voice be heard that is ready to go, if you want to, so that we can continue on with business, so we don't, so, if you would like to step out, thank you for being here, thank you for, for speaking, if you did so. I'm not throwing you out, so please don't take it that way. Okay, council. First up under the consent agenda is discuss 25069, which is discuss and consider the P&amp;Z declaration of the applicant's request for the variance at Carport. Sorry, 160.
I'm gonna make a motion that we move that off the consent agenda, so that we can consider the new information that P&amp;Z gave us, and discuss it for a second.
Okay, I got a motion on floor. Can I get a second? Any additional discussion? Okay, so we will move that off the consent agenda, and flip that down. What I'd like to do, Neil, make sure I'm not messing this part up, first time playing that, is we'll move that, just before we discuss the ordinances for, does that work for you? Is that what you wanted to move down there? Okay.
Yes, please.
So, under consent agenda, we've got the, let's see, regular session city council meeting for July 8th, as well as a special session July 23rd. So, council, I'll entertain the motion to approve those, unless there's discussion.
There's one change to the July 23rd, so can we just push that off, too? I've already sent it to NIDA. Okay.
Okay, so you want to hold off on that until we get the corrections?
Just take a second.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session on July 8th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 5-0. Okay, so, let's go back now to the July 8th. You had changes for that?
July 23rd.
I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, I sent a correction to NIDA, it was just, I mean, yeah, in the wrong place. She had made the change to the agenda item, and the change should have been made to the motion. And I guess I can tell you what that is, as soon as I find it. NIDA, do you have that in front of you? I don't have, I had it right here. Yeah, it was on the 23rd, oh, here, the 23rd minute. Under ordinance 2512, the correction of until August 12th, 2025 council meeting was made to the agenda item, and that should have been made to the motion. So, the motion should read, motion to table ordinance 2512, approving fiscal year 2324 budget amendment, recognizing revenue, expenses, and carry forward until August 12th council meeting. Yeah, I knew you got it. So, with that adjustment, if everybody's okay with that adjustment, I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes as adjusted.
Okay, got a motion on floor. With the, the adjustments so noted, can I get a second? Okay, council, any additional discussion, other than that change? And NIDA, you do have that correct? Okay, thank you. All right, and all those in favor with the, with the added correction? Any opposed? Motion passes with the correction, 5-0. Okay, back to 25069, the carport variance at 160 Lake Forest. So, I can get a motion to accept that. We'll open it for discussion. Dorothy, you said you had something, so.
Yes. When we got the packet of information, it didn't have the cover sheet on it to what P&amp;Z's deliberations were, and what their recommendation was. And so, Ken provided that at the beginning of the meeting, and so I think we now have that information. And they voted 5 to 1 to deny the request, and I guess I would also like to make a motion that we deny the request.
Okay, got a motion to deny the request for 160 Lake Forest.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, let me make sure this is clear for the record. So, all those in favor of denying the carport at 160 Lake Forest, say aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, 5-0 on that one. Okay, moving on to the two ordinances that we have for consideration tonight. So, there's a couple changes that, again, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't catch this one, I went through it with the, with the scrub with the city manager, and before they went out, so that's my fault. So, we're gonna start with ordinance 017, actually, which is talking with legal counsel, we actually have to adopt 017, which is the ordinance that establishes stagger terms by ordinance, if all that makes sense. So, one thing I will point out is, under section four, the initial application, this is one of the changes in discussion. We, last, last meeting, council, you guys, we entered, or when we last discussed stagger terms, we were considering moving it to November of '26. However, the cabash was put on that just of the sinking of the election. So, in your packet, it still says November 2026. Neil has already made the adjustments, that we'll read May 2026. So, if...
What are you talking about, Jimbo? Are you talking about 17 or 16?
17. Yeah, so we have to adopt 17 first, because that is the one that actually approves stagger terms.
But that doesn't have November or May on it. Unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, so, under section four, four? Yeah.
Initial application, what?
Okay, so ordinance 25017, right?
Okay, maybe this is in the wrong order. So...
Apologize for this sniffing, by the way, my allergies are kicking up again. Yeah, so ordinance...
17 has three pages.
Yes. Okay, and we're starting with 17, because that is the ordinance that actually adopts stagger terms.
Okay.
So, we have to do that first, before then, before we will draw straws. So, if you refer to 25017, under section one, the general election date, second sentence down, it says uniform election date in November, and Stephen just caught that one, that is going to be April still.
May, yeah, May.
Yeah. Well, the election should be April, we should swear in in May, that's correct.
The actual election, the election day is in May. Now, there's early election in April.
Yeah, it was May 3rd last year.
Okay.
May.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, May, we will make that change to May. God, calendars and numbers are hard.
So, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were just implementing staggered terms for city council. So, why does this include the mayor?
On the next ordinance, we agree to have the mayor's come up in two years. So, this is just for council tonight. The mayor will, will come up for reelection in two years.
So, 17 is an ordinance that sets our terms at two years, that sets the May election, and that there will be an initial application by our drawing, which will be tonight. Okay, I think I get it now. I was confused as to what the two were. But one is just setting our terms, and that we're gonna go, we're gonna have an initial staggered term drawn to the straws.
Yes, yeah, that's what 17 is. 17 establishes the initial adoption of staggered terms. And then, we will go back to 16, and we'll actually draw the straws and, and approve them there. So...
Okay, so we just need a motion to accept ordinance 2517, change in section one, from November to May, and in section four, from November to May?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I have.
Those two places. Okay.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion, now that it's clear as mud?
Sorry.
No, it's not you. I goofed that up. It's been a long night. Okay, so, motion and a second, no additional discussion. All those in favor with the changes, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, so, with the reflected changes, 25017 passes 5-0. Okay, now to the hands-on part. So, 2516 is the, where we will actually establish who is essentially doing a one-year term, which began at our last swearing-in, and will expire in May of next year. And so, the fill-in-the-blank parts, we'll say May 2026 and May 2027. The only change to that, again, something I didn't catch, is section two, council members serving a two-year term. So, we will have three council members essentially serving a one-year term, which began in May and expires this coming May, and then two of you will remain on for the additional two years, along with, with the mayor's seat.
Okay, did we, okay, we need to approve this, and then we draw straws?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we need a motion to accept 2516, with the, with the addition of adding May in number one and number two, and changing number two from a one-year term to a two-year term?
Correct.
Make that motion.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I second.
Add two, so, any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, nothing on that one. Okay, so, now the, the hands-on part. So, NIDA has prepared the drawing of the straws.
I have a quick question. Were we going to ask for volunteers before we drew the straws?
Counsel, that, that is entirely up to you guys. I will, I will open that up to, to discussion with you.
It's just stress, stress.
I was gonna volunteer, with the statement that I, you know, don't, I would like to continue to serve the city, and I would run again in May of '26, but I would like to volunteer, if that's an option. And then, you guys just draw the straws between two of you. Or we'll just draw straws.
Neil, is there any, any, any issues with that, if she would like to volunteer?
Okay, I would like to volunteer, and I, it is my intention to run again in May of '26, but I will go for a one-year term this time. I get the short one, okay.
Okay, so, we have prepared now four straws, too long, too short. The two short straws will run again in the next election. Yeah, we'll, we'll essentially do the short term, and we, we mold it over, unless there's any discussion or any issues, because, you know, me going down rabbit holes, I was like, okay, so we're gonna draw straws, who determines who draws first? So... Exactly. So, essentially, what we determine, probably the easiest thing to do, and, and I left that to, to NIDA, because I don't know half your names, but alphabetical order, unless there's any issues with that, so. issues with that, so.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right. Bruce. All right. Bruce will have the one. All right. Okay, so next we will have Bruce, and he will, I'll mix them up with my people, because he's all kind of- All right, Bruce.
Hail in, this next.
Two to go. One, five, one. Need a drum roll or something.
Dramatic music first now.
Okay.
For giggles.
Let's see what I got. All right. That was painless, that was painless.
Okay, so just to cover for the public at home, and just to make sure it's all on the record, so this following election, which will occur next year, I have Dorothy, Bruce, and Sam, you guys will be, your seats essentially will be up for reelection if you choose to run again. Stephen and Roxanne, your seat will be up the same term as the mayor's seat, which will be essentially a year and a half from now, so. Okay, thank you guys very much. Staggered terms back in play. So, okay, that completes all the official business. We do have finance updates, city manager updates, and then an executive session that we will go into. So let's go ahead and, yeah.
Hi, good evening. I'm here for the finance update. I put a copy in your packet, and then we have it on the screen for the public. One of the things that we mentioned at our last meeting was some of the items that we needed to bring forward, and I was asked to provide some examples of some of the issues that, because we do have bank reconciliations going on, but there has to be some changes. And so I wanted you to see some of the reasons why we needed to go over some of the information. When the mayor stopped by, I did show him this. For example, we did have an employee who is not on salary, who also receives a certificate. They have two different certificates. We have several employees that get paid on up to four different certificates. But if you look at the account number, it's put in red there, you can see it says salaries, but on the other side it says EMT incentive. So that's someone that receives a certificate, but they were charged to the hourly account, excuse me, to the salary account. So did they get paid? Did they get paid correctly? Yes, but it's out of a different account that they were paid. So all of that still needs to get done. And if you notice the date, that was in October of 2024. And so those are some of the changes that are going to have to be made, that are going to be coming your way. So I kind of wanted to give you a sample of some of the stuff. We also have Brinson Benefits, who is our consultant for insurance, and they got paid, they got paid correctly, but they got paid out of different accounts. And so those are some of the other changes that are going to be coming forward to you. So you can see in the red boxes the different accounts that need to get corrected that will be coming your way. Another sampling is another one of Brinson Benefits. Again, they're being paid correctly, but they're being paid out of different accounts, or were paid out of different accounts. The one that we brought to the last meeting, that we're doing that whole ground storage tank evaluation for what was paid out of federal funds, and also paid out of the water fund, and part paid out of general. This is another sample of the different accounts that were used to pay for the engineer. If you look at the account, 6213 is an engineering fee account, and then you also have now 6300, a capital improvement account, to pay for that same vendor. So did they get paid correctly? So far, yes, we can see that they got paid correctly, but there's a lot of cleanup because they need to be paid out of the right account. Professional services, engineering services, that would have been the correct account. And then just going back to the different types of cleanups that we had to do, I just brought another IRS sampling. If you look at this, sorry, I wasn't moving it. This is one of the bills that we did have to pay that was from a tax period going back to 2020. And so we have paid bills from previous years out of this year's budget. And so some of those budget for those fiscal years have already been closed, some of them haven't, so that's, I'm just bringing you samples so that you can see some of the stuff that, so you can give me guidance. Do you want me to put all of the backup documentation when I bring you the information? So I'm kind of giving you an update, but then also asking for some kind of guidance on how you'd like to see the corrections moving forward.
For me personally, I love getting the backup at the time of the request for approval of anything, and that way I've got it all in one place, I can look at it, it reduces the number of questions and stuff. Goes a little faster.
Okay, because, like for the payroll, I guess I'll get with Mr. Potts, because usually when it comes to personnel and stuff, we don't give out the names. And so if that's okay, because usually we don't give out employee names as backup because it would divulge their salaries and stuff. Like all the certificate pays and the hourly adjustments?
Well, what's the easiest thing for you to do? I mean, would it be easier just to black it out, or would it be easier to do a quick spreadsheet that says, here's all the backup, and you know, this is employee 1, 2, 3, 4, 5?
Yeah.
Whatever's easier for you, as long as we understand that these are the employees that are involved and why we're doing it.
Okay.
Like this is perfect for that 24th.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, okay. And if you ever, I mean, if you're ever getting ready to pull some information together, you know, you can always call me and say, you know, or call any of us, and just say, hey, you know, Stephen, what would you like to see on this?
At that point, call Dorothy.
Okay, well, whatever.
Okay, so those are, as we're going through and getting like the ground storage tank, that's, there's a lot, because it's not just moving, it's also updating and correcting the account numbers that they were paid out of. That's another wrinkle that needs to get done. Okay. And so for 25, 26, our budget update, and I think our city manager already brought this up, we're going to have the proposed budget, I think, at a special called session, and we'll be proposing the preliminary tax rate, which he already mentioned that is going to stay the same. And then after we propose, then at that same meeting, or after that meeting is adjourned, then we'll have another meeting that same day so that you all can adopt it. That's the goal so far. Okay.
And I'm sure public hearings will be involved in that.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, audit updates for 23 and 24. As you know, we have the draft, we do have some issues, again, getting, making sure we have all the ground storage tank information sent in. Bank reconciliations for 23, 24, again, are complete. We've already collected a lot of the documents that we needed to get, we'll be sending, we have the questionnaires, I need to follow up with the auditors, since we have new council members, even though the ones that were here last year, I don't know if they were here for 23, 24, but they may ask for a new questionnaire from, I guess, Sam and from Mr. Bruce. I'll find out, and I'll get back to you on that. Let's see, that one's already done. 2025 audit update, really 2025 things that are coming forward is, I guess, all these phases of everything that we need to do, it's not just moving now, it's also updating the account numbers of where things were paid. And the reason this is important, because as we go through for future years, and you want to see it exactly for professional services and for consultants, then you'll have a really good idea of how much money was spent in 24, 25, and 23, 24. You can't really see what we're supposed to bring you, how much money you spent in these different categories, if they're not categorized in the same account numbers from year to year. So it'll give you a better picture, and the community a better picture, of how the money was spent. Again, I'm not saying that it wasn't spent correctly, it's just the account numbers are in different places, and they should all be in one, and then the years are off on some of the expenditures. Okay, so that's all I have, do you have any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am, just a quick reminder on the questionnaires, those that have not completed them, me, get it done, I will. And if you thought I confused you with the staggered term stuff, you should have seen me looking at that computer the other day. I had no clue what I was looking at, just, so.
Oh, you looking at account numbers and-
Yeah, she was explaining what we just kind of covered, where it's, you know, the employee is receiving pay from different things, different things, we're going to go with things, so.
Oh, and buckets, different buckets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, council, nothing else? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager updates.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, City Council. Excuse me. The year one of the roadway improvement plan, as you probably noticed, there's several roads getting some attention. Year one is near completion, I think they're doing some roads in this area down the street, but also the, I think the last road is going to be Great West Loop, it's about 2.2 miles, so it's going to, it won't be done in one day, but that's, I think that's the last major road. And that will complete year one. There's one correction about what was said earlier tonight, I'll just highlight the fact that the parking lot was in the budget, and it was approved by council for $7,500. The problem is, we spent those dollars to pay other bills that we didn't anticipate paying from previous years. But the parking lot that was done in the back was, and I'm not, I don't think it's drainage issue, I think it's where we turned the water on, is that what happens, is that where we do our testing? Yeah. And it, was the ground messed up there from where it was constantly being used? Okay, so that's my understanding, that that was noticed by one of the contractor offered to do it. We had it in the budget originally, we took it out for another reason, they did, they now wasn't, they didn't care, I didn't care if it was the back or the front, as long as we got something done, I was happy to see it. But it was in the capital, not the capital, well, we called it that last year, but it's the CIP in the last few pages of that document in the budget for this fiscal year that we're in, you'll see $7,500 for the parking lot. Difference is, we just didn't pay for that, I mean, other than materials when they were using it, they were going to get disposed of, they didn't have to get disposed of since they were right there. It's not a very thick layer, it's very thin, but it's better than what we had.
Let me ask you a question on the road plan. So we've got two, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got two things going on. We've got the implementation of the road plan, which is an analysis of our roads, and we've had a third party guide us into what roads need to be fixed, but we're also out there filling potholes, right?
Yes, we did. We had about 10 potholes. Well, let me back up, what we told them was, is that we reduced the funds from $600,000 to $440,000, and so we had to reduce the scope of work to that. They came back and said, well, we'll just go ahead and give you the full year's worth of work, and then we had some potholes that they said they would take, go ahead and take care of, I think there was 10 of them, if I'm not mistaken. And that's pretty much where we left it, except for that parking lot that came in later on. But yeah, I think it was, was there 10 potholes total? But anyway, that's just a solo perspective about what's been said, just for clarity purposes. That said, though, the roadway improvement plan appears to be a success, from what I'm hearing from the residents, from what I've heard, or seen personally, so that was good. But we're not done yet, get Great West Loop out of the way, and then I don't know if they're going to finish these streets tonight, are they going to finish these streets today, or is it tomorrow?
And we will have a communication plan to the residents to let them know their road is coming next week, or whatever, so that they can anticipate that with their cars and the traffic and routes home and stuff like that.
And I think they also filled a few more potholes on Morgan's Point Boulevard, I saw that when I came down here for the meeting.
Dennis, do we, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, and for whoever has the answer. So do we anticipate a seasonal pause with them? I know we're talking about almost completing year one, do we, is there, when they do this kind of work, is there a seasonal pause where, because of the weather or anticipated weather, they don't pave year-round, or?
Are you saying, are you talking about, will they be back next year, same company, same-
No, 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 so we're almost done with year one, and I know we talk about with paving and everything, sometimes, like obviously up north, you can't pave when there's snow on the ground, we don't have to worry about that, but their plan of attack, will we see, you know, a couple months where, because it's winter that they are not paving, or will they continue around the calendar year?
For year two, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the thing of it is, it's over $50,000, and it's, we'll have to send out bids again. We didn't hire them for a three-year contract or a five-year, because we don't know how much money we're going to have, and, long story short, when the further you go out in a contract like that, usually the more they mark up, just in case for their work and their-
It would be good to roll into year two, if we could go ahead and get an RFP out.
Well, what we're trying to do is, once we get the audits, the money's there, we've got $440,000 set aside, so if you're all okay with it, with the budget the way it's presented, or whatever changes, in that sense, if we, we're not planning on using those until the summer months anyway. Generally speaking, you'd wait till after the rainy season in the spring, and then you would start looking at coordinating it. That said, it would also give us, one, the audits, we'll get back and we can see where we're at. Two, we can also have the opportunity to issue for some of those federal funds or state funds that might be available to do some areas, to take that $440,000 and maybe boost it several hundred thousand. I think the whole idea is, it's really to know what's benefit to wait 10 years to get this done, because if you think about, and I know it's 10-year plan, and yeah, you could stay on that, that's great, but if you can get like CDBG funding and get some part of town done, and then use this money in the other parts that's not going to qualify for CDBG, you may get year two done and year three at the same time, and that's the goal. If it, but there's no guarantee we'll get it, but at a minimum, we know we got this much set aside for this next fiscal year. Yeah, hopefully, we can do more faster, and the other side of that is, there's a lot of- Well, the thing of it is it's over 50,000 and it's, we'll have to send out bids again. We didn't hire them for a three-year contract or a five-year because we don't know how much money we're going to have. And long story short, when the further you go out in a contract like that, usually the more that they mark up just in case for, for their work and their.
It would be good to roll into year two if we could go ahead and get an RFP out.
Well, what we're trying to do is once we get the audits, the money's there. We've got $440 set aside. So if you're all okay with it, with the budget, the way it's presented or whatever changes. In that sense, if we, we're not planning on using those till the summer months anyway. Generally speaking, you'd wait till after the rainy season in the spring and then you would start looking at coordinating it. That said, it would also give us, one, the audits, we'll get back and we can see where we're at. Two, we can also have the opportunity to issue for some of those federal funds or state funds that might be available to do some areas, to take that $440 and maybe boost it several hundred thousand. I think the whole idea is it's really to know what's benefit to wait 10 years to get this done. Because if you think about, and I know it's 10-year plan and yeah, you could stay on that. That's great. But if you can get like CDBG funding and get some part of town done and then use this money in the other parts that's not going to qualify for CDBG, you may get year two done and year three at the same time. And that's the goal. If it, but there's no guarantee we'll get it. But at a minimum, we know we got this much set aside for this next fiscal year. Yeah, hopefully, hopefully we can do more faster. And the other side of that is there's a lot of reconstructs that's not even getting touched in that 10 years and that has to be addressed. And how we go about doing that depends on, you know, do we get access to more federal funding? Is it going to be something where we buy some equipment and try to do some of that ourselves? I don't know the answer, but that's something that has to be addressed sooner or later. Right now, we're maintaining what we have, so it doesn't get any worse. And definitely you can start seeing some of these roads getting treated and it should be good for several years to come. But the reconstructs are not a part of that and it's, they're expensive.
If I understood Dorothy's question was, when do you put the RFPs out?
Well, I'm saying we wouldn't do it because how, until we get the grants and then.
Money first, okay.
Yeah, we want to make sure we have the money lined up for it. We got the, no, it won't take us long. It's going to be pretty much the same as this year. Dates change and year two, scope of work. So it won't take long. But really, the question is can we get more if we can get some extra grants? And I think that's the way we want to do it. We'll do that during the winter months. You're not going to spend those dollars until later in the year anyway. So that gives us some time to do that. Get your audits, look for money. You don't get it, then send the RFP out and go ahead and knock out year two. Unless somebody's got a better idea. I'm just saying that's what we're looking.
That's fiscally prudent.
Okay. Okay, the next thing, Anse Park improvements. Like I said, we had a couple residents call about that with kids and they're concerned that the, I guess, the playground was, apparatus was actually taken out and they were looking to see how long it's going to take to get to do it in. I know you've all had that as a priority. This year, we're here in the next six, eight weeks, we should have the engineering firm onboard, give us a conceptual design. And with the October 1 fiscal year starting, we can take those dollars and go, and as we looked at with the Parks Committee, there are playgrounds that you can get nice ones for say age group two to 12 that run about 50,000. Well, we got 75 there. If we do the landscaping internally ourselves that fits that conceptual plan and start adding to that, that will give them something in the near term. And then what we'll do, again, coming back to the audits, having an idea what we have, we can start looking for funding for that as well. And I think that's, that's our hope that we could move that faster instead of taking years to get phase one, two, three and four done. We might be able to get it all done or at least half of it done in year, you know, one or two.
Parks and Rec had talked about going out for corporate sponsors and maybe getting some participation from our community on donations. Are you guys still going to pursue? Okay, still on the table. Okay, super. So that might, use your term, force multiplier.
It works, but I mean, it's, but you know, federal funds, state funds, there's, there's money out there. We just got to get, we just got to get over this hurdle. And that's not to say the other parks don't need work. They do and we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Smith Park, though, is one of the ones that we should be able to move forward for young and old to be walking through. We just got one area, possibly a bridge. That may be a little bit challenging, but BJ in his shop will give us guidance on how to best do that. But it's, it's going to be a nice scenic walk and it's going to be, I guess, it's going to be lakefront, lakefront property. So you can't beat that. You're probably going to be the only one with it around here. So it's going to be pretty used, pretty well used, I think. FM 2483 sidewalk project, the TechStop. We got about 90% of the engineering work done. It's supposed to let, as in it should go out in November to where we can get a contractor online and start that process. The four-way stop mentioned earlier, it's not that it's not a great idea, but there are, there are going to make some changes on that intersection. So it might be better to wait to see what they do and then backfill it from there. Yeah. There was some holdups on the concrete vault out there and they're thinking that we had it. But there's one, one employee that was here back and had the knowledge about that concrete vault and instead of us owning it, we think TechStop owns it, so it's their problem. So yeah, it worked out for us. But anyway, 90% completed on the, on the engineering and it's supposed to let in November. So that's good news there. Drainage fiscal year, 25 funds. The funds we have right now, because of various reasons, we were not spending the money, but we will, our plan is the proposed budget has zero in drainage. But what we're looking to do is take in those funds in this fiscal year and do a budget carry forward to next year. So we'll still have the same amount of money and it won't change that. We've got, has a chipper been actually processed yet? BJ, is it run, it's not, how much longer we got before that chipper gets? Okay, I think we got a quote somewhere. Well, anyway, we've got a chipper. That's that one that you all funded when we did the fire position to focus on the fire threat we're dealing with. But there is, that chipper's going to come in around 48,000 in that number instead of the 80. We still have that money sitting there. What we're trying to do is find out if this actually is going to work, this machine that, this excavator with the thumb might be beneficial if it is and it's recommended by BJ that to work in the various places throughout the city, then we were looking at taking that remaining money and looking at each fund chipping about the same amount. So it won't be big burden on any one fund. It'll probably be around 25,000 per fund and take those dollars and be able to purchase that equipment if it's the one we need. BJ, that chipper, we got the quote, it's in the system, but I don't know where we're at on, you just waiting for them to get the? The chipper.
The chipper.
The chipper.
It is, we're supposed to be putting in the PO system.
Okay.
I mean, we've already been in contact with the buyer.
And this, it was at under 50,000? It was like 48, 46?
46 and some change.
Okay, so we have about 30 some, 30,000 and some change. That and then take the rest of the enterprise funds and match that. It's about 134. He's not coming off of it yet.
Not yet. 134.5 is what currently the machine is for sale.
So if it passes his rental and he says, yes, this is what we definitely need, then we're planning on coming back and saying, let us hit these accounts. This won't be a burden on anyone, but it can help every single fund. For example, the Marina Fund. If you look back there where those trailers are that we were talking about the other day, up there, all that land behind it is actually city-owned property, but it's also a fire hazard. So we can clear that out and it, and all that equipment could get up there and do the things that chipper and everything he has. So that's one thing. We looked at the water department. There's areas where they can be used. Stephen said that there's a, there's a brush that's growing over the fence line. We can cut that stuff back with the right attachments. Now, we're not only going to have two attachments, I believe, the bucket and the thumb.
The grapple. The bucket and the grapple will come with the machine.
Yeah, so anything we want to add to it? Give us, what's some of the other things you told me we could do with that thing?
They got shredders, tree shears. I mean, there's a bunch of different attachments.
I don't know how much that costs, but if we can get, if this is the right way to go, you'll hear from us soon. And then it won't hit any one fund in a detrimental way and we can get this program up. I think it will help BJ do what he's doing, especially collecting all this debris that everybody has at their residences. Well, it depends. If fire has no problem with it, if they're not a hazard, they can stay right where they're at. But I don't know how that, I don't have the answer to that because I don't have the individual that's sitting there telling us how to do it.
I just had a thought. I was wondering if you would offer them to the population?
We could. Well, right now we've got, yes, I, would this?
So the chipper is going to benefit two sides of the house. It's going to benefit the public work side, but it's also going to benefit the fuel mitigation side. The fuel mitigation that y'all just approved to hire, the, well, Noel Shaver. So we're going to work together to try to clear up the brush issue. So yeah, these chips that we're actually going to chip up, citizens could use them. But then again, that goes back to the fuel mitigation side that a lot of that's not recommended for you to put wood chips next to your house. It's a fire, it's a, it's still a fire hazard, so.
No, but people use them for gardens and such.
Yeah. So that's the whole, the whole thing with the chips, that'd have to go through the fireside. That's what the fuel mitigation officer is going to do is educate people on how to make your house safer. We're just trying to get the brush out of there and off the streets.
And maybe Parks and Rec, I don't know.
So we'll, we'll, we'll bring that thing back, given, given BJ a little bit of time to see how it works and where it will work, where it won't work and whether it's the value that we think it will be. If it is, then that's how we're looking at paying for it. And that, and then, because next fiscal year, we know we're going to have to just wait it out until we get this information that we need on the bigger ticket items. We will also have, Ronnie's got some stuff that we need to take care of. Ronnie, if you don't mind, what was some of the things that you said was on that list that we must move forward with? I'm talking about the Marina, the walkway and all. Thank you, BJ.
We've got the, the walkway, the high water walkway has to be redone. This will be the third time. But they're supposed to build like a frame around them where they won't be falling off anymore. We went through the lowest we've ever been, 19-foot low and it tore it up. And then two hours later, the tornado, they fixed it, tornado tore it up. So now this year, when it came back up, it slid it all over and the little floats, they're just hanging on rocks now because we're, you know, we just move around. So they were going to build a cage around those. We also have some frames, like the walkway pads, they've got to be done. Like I'm only picking a, I just picked a few of them, the ones that they hit me on this year. And I told them we hadn't done by next year. We did, the Corps did hit me on those. There's this other little things like a bent walkway that's bent. So something's wrong somewhere, so that would fall under the inspection and stuff.
Did you get your mold mitigated out of?
No, ma'am. But well, they said they got it all, but I don't have any walls. And then I think Mike, is it?
Mike Reeves?
Yeah, Mike said he wasn't going to let them put it together yet till the way it is. Like, because you can still see the siding like all the way through the walls. So Mike said they weren't going to put it together like that. So, and I'm glad. I want it done right the first time.
That's on the list to get done.
Do what?
That is on the list to get done.
Yes.
Only thing is, we want to use, Mike's got a lot of expertise in that sense and utilize the resources that they have. Make sure it's done right instead of wishing we would have done something after the fact and say, well, we knew it, we didn't take care of it. So that's why Mike's involved. That's why we're going to try to do it the right way. But there's, that's a process. I don't know. Corps of Engineers, as long as it's public health, safety or welfare, they have no objections to us. Go ahead and take care of those in a, in our way, as long as it's not changing anything major as far as the buildings itself. But there's still some work to be done. In total, I think it was like 90,000, is that what I saw?
Yes, sir, 90,000. And that's, was it, that was the walkway, the high water walkway. It was at, I guess such a mess, I didn't have places to take it. So, so this is what, I can't tell you what it was.
That's all right.
I think it made, that was including, if I'm right, the 20,000 for the.
They had 20.
Inspection. The guy that was going to do our inspection backed out and never called us back or anything like that. We're supposed to have that done the first of May. We never would have had to shut down and he just ghosted us. So we had to find another one. And they're coming out of Oklahoma and Missouri. It's just, we're doing what we can do. I had another one that was coming from Austin and he wanted me to send pictures of it. And these aren't things you can send pictures of. These, you got to come look at it. And if you can't come from Austin to look at it, are you going to come and fix it? You know, so we're, I know it's taking time, but we got to do it right. And it's 25 years old, so we're going to start spending some money on it. Last three years, we haven't done anything really money-wise, you know, besides the tornado.
So we get this back, get this, just stuff taken care of. Then once the new fiscal year rolls around, we'll be right back with Doc D. Refloat.
Yes, sir.
And then right behind that, if it's done fairly quick and we got the money, just go on and get E. done because it's got to be done and we get that behind us. So thank you. Thank you for that. Ronnie? And I think that's pretty much the most of it right now.
Okay, Counsel, that concludes everything on the regular session. So we'll go around the room while our residents are still here. And any comments for our residents before we?
Residents that are here and maybe residents that are listening, thanks for participating in the political process to have your voices heard and we hear them loud and clear and thank you.
Yeah, just thank you for, for the citizens, for all your input, you know, whether it was on the positive side or not so positive side. Believe me, we do listen to what y'all have to say. Thank you very much.
I'll do that.
Likewise.
Okay, so we will, we will adjourn out of the regular council meeting at 19:26. Let's take, yeah, let's take five or 10 minutes. We will reconvene back in the workshop and then go into executive session.